Six hundred fifty-eight.
No, seven, no.
Well, that was down there.
Seven thousand eight hundred fifty-four.
I even, I even took the one.
A few to go before.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, yeah.
I'm only at forty-eight hundred. I even shouldn't do it. It's cloud in the yard.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. Um, I need Larry and Peggy to raise your right hand. Repeat the oath. I state your name.
I.
I, where in here?
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties of planning commissioner.
And faithfully discharge the duties of planning commissioner.
Faithfully discharge the duties of planning commissioner.
Yeah, the city of Breezy Point.
In the city of Breezy Point.
County of Crow Wing.
County of Crow Wing.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
All right. You're in. I'm gonna move right on to the election officers. We'll take nominations for chair.
I nominate Joe Ayers to repeat as chair.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Peggy as assistant chair.
We'll read them one at a time?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Let's vote.
Okay.
Any, any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'll just take your vote, Carol.
Okay.
I'll second that one, too.
All right. Any other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Uh, with that, I'll turn the meeting over to you, Joe.
Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Approval of the October eleventh, two thousand sixteen minutes.
I'm not the motion that they'd be approved as drafted, even though I don't recall all of that stuff, because it was quite a while ago.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Here, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of that motion in minutes? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Uh, city council liaison report. Councilman Maroni.
Good evening.
Welcome, welcome to the planning commission, Mike.
Yes. I've missed this. I have.
Well, that's, that's great.
Looking forward to the fun year and having some better discussions with you all.
Right.
Be fun.
Right.
Uh, so new to being council liaison, um, looking at January's meeting, um, we approved, uh, the paving for White Birch Six, or at least going to bid for that. Um, we had some discussion about steel coating for new roads. Many few other housekeeping items such as our hunting ordinance revision. The chief brought to our attention in regards to, um, shooting bows, bow and arrows within, within the city. So we clarified some language of that. And I believe it's on discussion, um, later on. About the animal husbandry. Obviously, since you didn't meet in December, our November meeting, um, we did, uh, call for a vote on the animal husbandry. And we'll get into this later, but, um, it did pass with a three to two vote in route, but it was changed on what the planning commission forwarded to us. Um, they dropped link on the two zoning district titles right now, but the residential districts were stricken, um, from the approval. And, um, totally dropping link on all the means right now.
That's okay.
What did?
You mean the districts or what else?
Yes, what districts?
What did residential, state lots residential on urban reserve?
Okay.
Urban reserve went to ten acres, uh, as an interim use permit, and the others were excluded.
So, um, immediately after that did pass, um, I did ask for a motion for a, another joint meeting between, uh, the full council with, with the new council and the PMZ to rediscuss, um, which passed, uh, and honestly there, um, I felt that at that point that we took away some property rights. But we'll get into that a little bit later, so, um, we'll, we'll be discussing that.
Anyone have any other questions about the council meeting?
I do.
Yes.
Did it come up where this person is illegally hunting with his bow in the city, or is it?
Um, I, I don't, it, it wasn't addressed actually of anybody specific.
Oh.
Um, it was just more of a, a verbiage change. I think there was some complaints, but we, we, we just clarified it in the.
There has been complaints about someone hunting with a bow without getting property owner permission, and the ordinance didn't specifically say that. And so he is pushing the envelope, and the chief just said enough, enough, let's change the ordinance.
Another question, on the roads?
Mm-hmm.
About how long does it take for them to, from start to finish, when they start paving?
The actual construction?
Mm-hmm.
Um, paving only takes a couple of days, but the, but the dirt work and what have you, it just depends on what needs to be done. I would guess the project would be somewhere in the neighborhood of five, six weeks, you know, from start to finish.
That's a long one, because the one they did in front of, uh, Mike and my place, that went pretty quick, once they started work.
Sure, once they start work, but you know, like, there's one cul-de-sac that needs to be built up, it's not wide enough. Uh, we've gotta cut down the hill on Pawnee Circle, um, they're gonna do some corrective with drainage, maybe not a lot, but some. You know, so there's just odds and ends, and then there's restoration at the end as well. So, um, I would expect about six weeks. It could take longer, but you know, that, that'd be my guess.
And the estimate is the start in June, isn't it, around the first of June?
Yep, in that neighborhood, right after road restrictions.
Yeah.
Yep. Larry?
Question for Mike and, or Joe. Does the city council still approve all of the nominees through any of the committees, like this one, or cemetery, or parks and rec? I didn't see that's on their agenda, do they talk about new candidates? Or if we just say we wanna go, we wanna be on it again, we get to stay for our whole life if we want?
Yeah, um, it was actually part of the organizational resolution. So that was part of there. Um, is there anything in specific you're looking for?
I'm just curious how the vote came out.
Oh, I agree, everybody's just fine with it.
Okay. Well, some of us are more ordinary than others.
So Tom, Tom, uh, presented that and that passed.
Okay.
No qualms if sands or butts voted.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, we'll move to, uh, the open forum. We've got the open, uh, open forum number one. Obviously, we, uh, we don't have any participants, so, uh, we will close open forum number one and move to discussion of Channel Road vacation petition.
You? Go for it.
Okay. Earlier this past summer, we had a complaint from a resident that, um, somebody, didn't know who they were, but he was sure he was a resident of the area, was utilizing a unimproved roadway next to his property to get access to Lake Oswin McKee. Um, he also stated that the gentleman or whatever would just go out there and sit in his lawn chair and, and watch the lake on the dock that he put out. We really didn't know exactly where he was on the property, and we suggested that he talked to his neighbor, which is, Mr. Norris was the one that, that came in and complained. Uh, the neighbor is the Wagner Estate, and we suggested that they talk to the Wagner's and, and to, to see if in fact the gentleman had had permission. Uh, when he finally got to the Wagner's, uh, found out that the gentleman did not have permission to be on that property, and, um, they have forwarded a petition to us to vacate a roadway that is unimproved, that, um, was being utilized by somebody from the public. We don't even know who this gentleman is that, that was using that, uh, piece of property. And their intent is to have it vacated and that the, once it's vacated, that there would no longer be a public right-of-way down to the lake, and he would be, um, he would no longer be able to utilize the, the lake, the access. Petitions for vacation are somewhat common. Probably not as common for this type of reason, but, um, typically, if the vacation is, is granted, the property is divided between the two property owners. Or the vacated property is divided between the adjacent property owners. In this case, because it came off of a, uh, the roadway comes off of the original subdivision of the Valley of Contentment, so it would go to the adjacent owner in the Valley of Contentment. It would go all to one individual. The statutory grounds for vacation is, is the finding that there is no public purpose for the roadway and/or the public property, and that it's better off being in, in private, private hands. We, this petition and the public hearing will be held in front of the city council. But because it's a land use issue of sorts, we thought it best that the planning commission, at least number one, know about it. If they have some feelings or thoughts about whether this is the right thing to do to relinquish public property that's adjacent to the lake, which is kinda unique. We're asking you to take a look at it. As you, when you look at our agenda this evening, everything here is kind of what's gonna come up in the future. The hearing for this petition won't, is not going to happen until about approximately May of, of this year, because there's a, a requirement that we have to notify the commissioner of the natural resources. And he has, he or she has sixty days to, to make a comment. The, his comments are not binding, but they do have the, uh, responsibility to, to comment on, on the petition. Again, if, if you have some, some issues with it, we'd like to know, or I think the council would like to know prior to the, the public hearing, if the planning commission has any strong feelings one way or the other.
Can we ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay, can you show me on this map? I, I was looking at this, we drove down there, and I was trying to decide which place exactly, is it, is it exactly where Channel Road ends and goes to the lake, or does it, is it where it curves down? Is there several pieces of?
You drove down, I tried to drive in there today, but.
Well, you can't.
Couldn't.
He couldn't, no.
Okay, this is where Mr. Norris lives, right here. And what he's talking about is a vacation of something, right there. Now, Hilltop Drive is plotted up here, but there, what services this Valley of Contentment subdivision basically is a private easement. So it's where, where it curves into the Valley of Contentment, oh, straight out to the lake. It's an unimproved piece of property, it looks like it, just like it's a piece of dirt.
So is that other big piece to the west there, is that all that Wagner Trust?
Yes.
Oh wait, no, I'm living over here, yeah, there.
Yes, this, this hall is Wagner Trust.
So there's only one owner on the, I guess that would be the west side?
There's one owner on the west side, one owner on the, on the east side.
I wasn't sure if it included whether there was multiple owners.
No, there, there is. All the people that own property in that subdivision have signed that petition also.
Not quite, three property owners have not.
Okay, but for the majority, the majority of the property owners have signed that petition.
And how many property owners have?
Um, oh, I didn't bring that with me. I think it's, I think it's eleven, or maybe fifteen, or something like that.
About fifteen properties in that original subdivision, yep.
And this is all unimproved?
Yes, yes. There's actually, I think there's a homestead on it, but that's it.
This roadway parcel that they're talking about vacating is approximately two hundred and fifty feet long by sixteen and a half wide, so it's basically a cartway.
And nobody's gone in to find out who this guy is that's decided to homestead it, with his dock?
It's probably not even relevant, is it?
You know, he, they've called the cops, and the cops have gone there, but they've never been there at the same time that, you know, that the guy.
The allegations were that they were putting a dock out at the end of the thing, and, and you can see the dock, it's not on the public right-of-way. But, you know.
What would happen if the dock were on the public right-of-way?
Then we'd probably have issues with it. If it was, say, a foot.
Then we would be able to say, get it off.
Yes, but if it was a foot in the water, you know, didn't touch land, there'd be nothing we could say.
That's right, because that's DNR issues.
That's DNR, yep.
Was it left in the water over the winter, do we know? Because he couldn't have pulled it up there on the land.
I, we haven't gone back down there to.
I'm not even sure a dock exists, I think that was just part of the excuse.
Has the city ever thought about doing anything with that little cartway?
Um, no, not that I'm aware of.
You're not, no, good eye.
We, we heard some rumors that some people have used it in the past to get access to the lake in the wintertime.
That's what I was thinking, it would be a great snowmobile or four-wheel access.
But we don't have any substantiation to that.
Do we have a right-of-way to that property, or do we, the city own the property?
City owns it.
Well, it's not fee title, it's part of the plat.
Yeah, it's been dedicated to the public through a plat.
Okay.
So if the city owns it, then one individual should not be putting a dock on it. We could have a public dock on it for all of us to go use if we want to, right?
Fish and pier.
A fishing pier.
I mean, that's something that the city could consider, but we don't know that there was even a dock down there. I mean, the dock that's shown on this plan is on Wagner's property.
So we'd almost have to wait until spring to see if a dock goes back out before we'd even know. Or are they just trying to get that piece of property sewed up down there, so they don't have to worry about it anytime in the future?
There, I think the intent is that nobody else can use that public property to get access to the lake.
They want their privacy.
Of course, it's an everybody.
And they'll gain some land of it.
If we did, if we're supposed to abandon it, if we, if we truly said we would never use it again, and we don't wanna make it for a, a winter access to the lake, why wouldn't we sell it to them?
Can't sell dedicated property.
Then why don't we keep it?
Yeah.
Can keep it.
We gain nothing by giving it away.
And we certainly don't gain anything by letting one person put his dock there.
No, but that, that's more the issue, guys' property uses on. We don't have, we wouldn't necessarily have control of the fact that somebody put a dock on somebody else's property.
No, and we don't even know for a fact that there was a dock there, it could've just been people talking about stuff. You know, the issue really gets down to these property owners next to this right-of-way do not want other people there.
But if it's public land?
Yeah.
Which it will be if the city keeps it, they can complain all they want, but guess what?
Yep.
And I can see somebody taking a snowmobile club, being willing to clear out some of that brush to make that a trail.
Well, actually, it's a pretty open trail, Joe showed me pictures of it.
Already there.
Yep.
I think you're, you're gonna, the, when the public hearing is, is held, you're going to hear from their attorney, who is gonna say, there's no public purpose whatsoever, and the city has an obligation to, to vacate it.
It sounds like attorney talk, doesn't it?
Yeah, he's, well, and when we met with him.
We've met with him.
And when he also, he also said that it's in keeping with, um, conservation of the lake by, by taking away this public access.
And taking away the rights of anybody else coming in and using it. One, one last question, we're beating this thing pretty good, is, uh, who's ever got that property on the east, has got a garage there right next to it, he must have gotten into the setback issues, didn't he?
He, anything that, since I've dealt with him, we haven't had any issues with setbacks, that, it's probably a pre-existing condition.
Okay.
Is there other access to that Wagner property, or is that road it?
Actually, it comes up further along Channel Road. You can, you can access the Wagner property from south of there.
Do we know anything about this Wagner Trust?
We know absolutely nothing.
I mean, how do we know that in the future they might dedicate it to park property or something like that?
He really has no control over it, it's not on his property. He's just a budding it.
Right, but no, but, you know, to keep the access there to the lake, and then if sometime in the future that property would be dedicated to parkland or something like that, would it have the road?
I kinda hate as a city to give up any property that's.
Especially lake access.
Especially with lake access, exactly. Unless there's a pretty darn good reason to do that. But I don't know what that would be right now, except to make, the people down there don't want any access to the lake.
Yeah, I agree with you. Saying, well, we don't want other people coming in here is not really a good reason, you know?
One potential advantage is that this private party would begin paying taxes on that property, which is not being taxed now. On the other hand, they obtain a pretty valuable piece of lake shore.
Yeah.
But I'm correct, they, they will be, once it's vacated, they will be paying taxes on it, correct?
Yep.
But if it's only sixteen feet wide?
Yeah, I was gonna say, it would be a dollar.
It's only, each, each side, we don't forget, seven and a half feet.
No, it just goes to the Norris's.
What's that?
Typically, it's split down the middle, but because it came from the plat, it goes to the plat. So the Norris would, the Norris, um, owners would get all of it.
But it's.
Sixteen and a half.
Sixteen and a half, okay. So they're the ones that started it, so they're the ones to gain. It's pretty smart on their thought.
Probably part of the deal to get the plat is saying that we will have this access to the lake. As opposed, as opposed to the goodness of their heart.
Probably.
So do we make a recommendation to council on what we, how we feel, or?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Carol, you've done such a good job of, or Peggy, you did such a good job of mentioning, why don't you propose a suggestion for the council, and I'll let you second it, on what we would wanna do?
Okay. The planning commission would recommend that we keep the property, um, as it is and not allow the vacation, or not recommend the vacation, because there may be a future possibility of using that as a public way onto the lake for either winter or summer activity.
And I would second that recommendation.
We have.
Let me, let me, the, the, the reason it's in front of you is because we just got the petition, and, and I don't think we expected a recommendation coming for you this instant. I think we've got some time to think about it, and you might have some time to view it, and, and whatever. We're not going to have a public hearing in front of the council until May. So I, I would suggest you, you kinda hold back a little bit on the, on the recommendation, and, you know, if, if that's how you continue to feel, that, that's not a problem. But think about it a little bit.
You guarantee us another bite at the apple?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We will get another opportunity.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep bringing it up, and you, and you'll keep bringing it up, and, and we'll, we have a couple months.
I'll withdraw the motion, then, um, as long as we hear about it before it actually comes to the council.
Yeah.
Does the, does the city council, do they ever go out and site visit it, something like that? I, I.
Yeah.
You're, you're actually viewing this before any of the city councils even seen this.
Well, that's good.
The maker of the motion has withdrawn her motion, and the second of the motion has withdrawn.
Okay. One more quick question, how can we have three pages of signatures that are kind of almost the same?
Uh, because some of them have new signatures, and so they had.
Why not just show the latest one?
Uh, because they're different.
Some of them, each one has a different signature, I mean, there might be the same three, but they copied the petition so that they could have others sign it. If you look at the little, um, I don't know what you call them, little marks off in the numbers, those represent new people. So on the second page, ten and eleven is new people, on the third page, eight is a new person.
Is it legal to sign multiple petitions for the same object or subjects?
It's the same petition, same language, it's just multiple copies.
I was curious that, like, husband and wife, you know, one person signed it for both of them, rather than having each individual sign.
In Minnesota, you have joint tenants with regards to property ownership, so it doesn't really matter.
Okay.
Okay, we'll then move to the next item on the agenda, which is, uh, discussion of animal husbandry. And there is a memo in the packet that, uh, explains what the city council did with the recommendation from this committee. Joe, did you have?
Well, let me just add a little bit, I mean, Michael introduced the issue with his, um, opening, um, council liaison report. Um, the council will talk about the issue in February, whether or not they wanna have a meeting. And, um, and once we know kinda where we're going, then we'll get back to the commission as far as what the next steps are. I don't know what else more I can add, do you wanna add anything, Michael?
Is there a proposed date for this joint meeting that we're going to discuss this issue with the new city council?
No, it doesn't have. I think that's in the February meeting that we're.
So it'll be probably sometime, I just don't want it to, him gone, and I had such an integral part of that first one, that I'm gonna be gone like about February eighteenth to the first week in April, so I might not get to be a part of it, which would be very unfortunate, you know?
I thought I saw something about an April date for it.
No, that's the other meeting we were gonna have, the twenty-fourth, or the.
Oh, it's a different meeting.
We talked about it at our first meeting, right?
Yeah.
So the April?
The concept, or at least way I'm looking at it, is the council, um, needs to talk about, we've got two new council members, and the council needs to talk about, are we ready to talk about this, and, you know, um, are we all on the same page? And it may take some time and some discussion to figure out kinda where we wanna go in terms of the discussion in general, let alone the joint meeting with the planning commission, is that a good way to say it?
Yeah.
Okay.
If we were to stay with what we kind of had, do they even need us to be involved again? With forty percent new council members, can't they just bring it up on their own and say, this is what the, the planning commission suggested? This got changed, do we wanna readdress it, do we even need to be involved?
Well, you'd ultimately have to be involved, because you'd have to have a public hearing to, to look at the language change. But the council could give you direction, I mean, it's conceivable, they could say, well, we, we don't wanna do this, and let's go back to the way it was, or whatever. But you'd still have to be involved in the process.
Because now, Larry, there is a new ordinance, a new ordinance.
I'll take another, uh, okay.
Well, then you mentioned that there might be some property rights violations, or something like that, I'm not sure how you worded that.
My, my feeling at the time was that we revoked property rights to, to those who, who would, who would work with that. Another thing that I asked Joe was, is to actually come up with a map showing exactly which two areas, with, with the five acre minimum, what, what did we actually pull out, what did the council actually pull out by, by removing those two? Um, in my opinion, it wasn't many properties, um, and, and the locations of where those properties are, I think it would still be adequately suited for those, for that use to be in those areas. I'm a visual person, and, and I felt that, uh, without having that there, I felt we could've made a better judgment call, uh, when we discussed that. And so that is one thing that I asked Joe to prepare, uh, for that joint meeting, to, to see exactly, where is it today, where was it, and what, what, what did the planning and zoning commission put for, before us, before we changed it?
Okay, sounds like a good plan. I do have a question, though, that kinda goes along with this, because this little, that you gave us on interim use permits and what to know. So when we change those conditional uses to interim uses?
Mm-hmm.
One of the bullet points here is the date or event that will terminate the use can be identified with certainty. And we went to interim use because after a certain period of time, we could review it, but not saying that that would be the ending of the.
As an interim use, there is a drop dead deadline.
There is one interim use.
And, and, and that's the end of that permit, and so if people wanna continue the use, they have to reapply, come back to the planning commission, and you folks may wanna make changes to that interim use conditions.
Okay, so it's.
So let's say they're dog grooming business, and they're letting dogs run at large, and they're not confined, or whatever. You wanna make sure they have a fenced area if they're gonna continue that use, that kinda thing.
So it's one end, but then they could start another one?
They could apply again.
Yeah, okay.
There's, there's one caveat to that, though. If in fact, the interim.
If, in fact, the interim use is granted, and the ordinance changes, and it doesn't allow for interim use, when that interim use sunsets, it can't be reapplied for, because the ordinance has changed, and there's no provisions for it in the ordinance.
I would presume also...
Kinda what happened down with the, the horses, is that the ordinance changed, they were coming, they could've come in under the old ordinance with a sunset, but once that sunset was reached, if it was approved, they wouldn't have been able to reapply. So, they could've had a huge investment in the property and not being able to use it for that purpose.
Also, if somebody moves, the interim permit ends, whereas with a conditional use, it stays with the land.
It ceased to happen. The intent was to give you an idea what interim uses do, and that's kinda why you have that information.
Those are helpful, just from my point of view.
Yeah, that's nice. The preference. I might put it in my book.
Any further discussion of the animal husbandry? The court will move on to the next agenda item, which is potential subdivision. Eleven acres located on the east of north Lakeview Drive and south of Weaver Point Road. I understand we don't have a lot of information, Jerry, but could you share what we do have? Sure, and that, this is again, it's a FYI, something that will be coming before you in the near future, I believe. The bank has owned this, well, I should go back to, by 2005 and 2006, there was a proposal for a CIC platte condominium type situation, where they're proposing eighteen townhouses on this eleven acres of property. That developer went broke, and, and the bank has owned this property since 2008. They've been trying to sell it for forever, and they finally have somebody that is interested in. What we know about this gentleman is that he's from Colorado. That's really all we know about it.
But he grew up in Minnesota.
But he grew up in Minnesota, I'm sorry.
That's right.
And has made an offer to the bank that supposedly the bank is, will accept. I think he's trying to figure out what he needs to do in order to develop the piece of property. What we have heard from him and the engineers that are representing him is that they're proposing four to five individual lots on the eleven acre parcel. We don't know where access is coming from yet. We don't know how big each parcel is going to be. Those are the type of things that are coming forward. The intent is that it meets the terms of our ordinance, and, and it would be a subdivision, it would be subdivision approval that would need to come from planning commission to city council, back to planning commission for a final platte, and, and city council approval, and then the development of the, the properties. We would probably do a developer's agreement with the individual, depending upon the type of utilities that are necessary. I think there's gonna be some debate about private versus public road. I think there's gonna be, you know, a requirement, from our standpoint, that the sewer system go from the west all the way to the east, so that if, in fact, the folks on Weaver Point want to either develop some of the vacant property and/or service the existing properties, that the opportunity would be there. I think we're gonna probably have a, a discussion about Weaver's Point Road, what's the status of that, and where's that going. We did, in the conversation that we had with the, the owner and the engineer, we suggested that they meet with some of the folks on Weaver's Point to get some input, rather than causing some adversarial type situations, where there's a give and take that can happen. Maybe there's some benefits for those folks, too. We don't know where that's going, but in a nutshell, that's what we know. It's, it's something that we think is coming. Since I've been here, I've, I've talked to somebody about that piece of property a lot. This is the firmest that it's ever been, as far as speculating on that piece of property and the potential to develop it.
Where's that from Joe's house?
Right across Weaver's Point Road. The, the private part of Weaver's Point Road.
So, is that closer to you?
Yes.
So, you have an interest in this one, you have to accuse yourself.
If you were to describe this piece of property, would be, if you went into the gate, it would be immediately to the, between the gate and the, and the lake.
Okay.
And if you go down north Lakeview Drive down the hill, it would be to the left.
Some people don't realize that literally as you go through that gate, you're now on a private road. Weaver, the, the public part of Weaver's Point Road ends, ends there, yeah. It's, it's approximately eleven or twelve acres, and there's a huge part of it that is wetland. So, there is some, there are some issues with, with wetland. Based on, looking at the old file, it seems like the biggest issue was wetland conservation when they were proposing the development back in 2005, there's the wetlands, and, and I think there was a huge controversy over the number of docks that were gonna happen in one place. And, and quite frankly, there's some challenges on that. You know, it's the only undeveloped piece of property in Breezy Point that's on, on, on the lake, but yet there are some challenges to developing it. Jerry, am I correct that the entire, every home would, would actually, the wetland is, would be between where you could build a home and the lake? Yes.
Pretty much.
Every one of those... Yeah, I think so, I think that's accurate. Yeah. So, that, I would assume the DNR is going to get involved? Well, there'd be some review by the DNR. If, if they're not proposing to do anything, and they're just proposing to do individual lots, I think they can get a permit from the DNR to do like a fifteen foot swath out to the, the water, that they can put a boardwalk per se, or, or elevated dock system on. I think that's pretty normal for them to, to grant those type of permits. If, in fact, they got into the point where they wanted to fill some wetland and create some others and that kinda thing, then we would really be in some, I, I think, some very expensive proposals, and I don't see that happening, but anything is possible with that one.
Our subdivision ordinance, do we have a minimum acres when they subdivide that they need to buy back?
Yes.
Yes.
Which is what in that area?
I don't... What's that, someone even... Two acres.
Two acres.
And with twelve, eleven or twelve acres, you can, you can be able to conform to the subdivision regulations.
And with public sewer, it makes it a lot easier to get...
You can only put in five or six lots. You can only put in five or six slots, then?
I think you probably can only put in five.
Well, it depends, you see, eleven or twelve, but if you got up to twelve, you might be able to squeeze in the other one. But you're probably right, more likely to five.
I think the, the land itself will dictate some of that, as far as the topography. The wetland is getting enough space where there can be a buildable, or the building in look. I think that will dictate a lot of what's gonna be proposed. Then again, because I think they're going to be, the house themselves would be so far back from the lake, they're gonna want some kind of view and whatever, and I think you gotta take a look at that. Without that, they're not gonna be as marketable.
They start having clearing issues, don't you?
There are expensive lots.
They'll start having clearing issues if they're way back, and people want the view of the lake, and all of a sudden, trees don't accidentally fall in the storm with chainsaw marks.
There's a, there's a pretty good hill there.
I was, I was reading something this past weekend, about, there was wrestling with the fact that neighbors wanted a view of the lake, but their neighbor had a forest in front of them, and they couldn't see through the forest, and they wanted to be able to require the city to require this guy to cut down all these, these trees, so that they would have a view also.
Didn't go very far, did it?
No, it didn't go very far, but that's, that's, that's what people are, are today. They, they really think of their own lives rather than somebody else's.
Do our ordinances permit someone to come in with eleven acres like that if a lot of it is wetland? To say, "Okay, we'll, we'll cluster the houses up here, that everyone has access to all of the..."
I think you could do a community, community, PUD type thing, you could do that, or you could...
That could come out of this yet, too.
You don't know.
Sometimes the issue on that gets to be is, is with all that, do they want a community? Or you got eleven more, or seven, five more docks, or, or more out there on the property?
Well, that would be a unique dock.
If you have one community dock versus six community docks. Or, you know, somebody might have, they want a dock for a pontoon boat, and one for a shore station for a speedboat, then they want another dock for a fishing boat. That's a DNR issue.
Yes.
There are those issues, yes. The impression we got from the developers, he wanted to develop single-family lots that go all the way to the shore.
Is it possible to even do that, though, with the way the wetland is in there?
Well, yeah, it's possible to do that, but I mean, they may have to bridge or do a boardwalk or something over, over the wetlands.
Actually, if you take that scenario, most of those lots will kinda go in four that way. Same thing. They have huge expanses of wetland in order to get to water, or the open water.
And lots of mosquitoes, we went through that. Should've brought it up, huh?
You, you paid a lot of money for mosquitoes. Especially this property, it's gonna be an interesting one to develop. It does have some challenges, and, and quite frankly, that's why it's been on the market for so long. And, you know, there's some other pieces, the cost and the price that it's been asked for. And what you give from the lake, the lake is extremely shallow there for a distance. Another time, one, three or four foot dock.
Wow.
But again, it's the only piece of property left.
I thought the coffee pot was going hot, it's you.
Any other discussion, questions? We'll move on to others. Again, these are just FYIs, some, some information that we, uh, came across the desk, and we think is pertinent to planning commissioners. But I think the, the thing that you should be most interested in, though, is the buildings permit summary. It shows that we were done a house or so, but yet we're up in value, so we think we're progressing. Lots of re-roofing.
Is that because of some of those storms, why a lot of the re-roofings?
Nature did most of that, yeah.
I think we ended up with about a hundred and seventy-three roofing permits this year.
What is the campgrounds, what is that, just property sold in the campground or developed?
I think those are sites.
It's like Minnesota rooms, or decks, or whatever in the campground.
Oh, in the campground.
Yeah.
It's either high view and/or the two clusters that are over here. There wasn't that much activity in the campground this year than compared to other years. Any questions on that, the board? Interim use permits? Interim use permits? Again, that's a FYI, they, they, I think it tells you a little bit about interim use permits.
Yes, that's...
And it's not, the intent was to say that they're not the savior to everything, but they are a tool to be utilized. The piece on the corner, enforcement was interesting. Again, if you do, you have to be diligent.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question in number four?
Sure.
What has happened to the breezy development of the cabins at Deacon's? My understanding was they were gonna break ground this fall, and obviously, it happened.
Um, I, we really don't know. Their, their conditional use permit is open for a year, and they can come in and reapply for an extension for a year. We really haven't heard much of anything about it.
Ditto for the development, uh, at the old stable?
Uh, we did have another discussion with them about that. They have a, I'll call it a master plan. They'd like to develop both sides of the highway, both by the ice arena and there. They're talking about multiple buildings, commercial buildings. The convenience store seems to be at the top of their agenda. Second sheet of ice is on the top of their agenda on the other side. We think they'll be asking for abatement or tax increment, they've asked about it. Tax increment's kinda hard to do, or, well, it's not hard to do, it can be done, but typically, you don't do it on retail. The council representatives that met said we'd be at least open-minded to considering an abatement, but not tax increment.
And we haven't approved anything for that.
Nope.
It was just our information for our...
That's correct.
Actually, the only action that you were, you were asked to look at at the time was a rezoning of the second piece of property, and then they pulled that application.
And you can't use, use TIPS anymore, can you, for sheet of ice?
No, no, that was only available a couple of years.
Since we're asking questions about all of that, how are things going down on the corner where they're putting in the car wash, whatever? Does it seem like they're...
I think things are going fine. Part of the delay was the state's review of the plumbing, and I think that's happened. I'm not really sure, but they've enclosed the building, and they're working inside, and that's about all I know. Scott seems to think they're making good progress.
Okay. When you see it, you know, visually now, it looks so much bigger than what it does on the piece of paper.
Oh, sure.
And I, all I can think of when I drive by it is those big trucks coming around back. I hope there's none within one at a time. Doesn't seem like the room is that big, but...
Well, I think, you know, when you, when you get into a site like that, the scheduling becomes really important, and, and management of the site. And they will have to do that type of thing in order to not cause undue congestion. Because if you do cause that to happen, the customer goes away. And then they really have to do some things to preserve the customers. Scheduling becomes very, very important.
Aren't the deliveries kinda in the front now, and they'll be in the back at that time?
Yeah, except I'm just thinking of the space. Yeah, except I'm just thinking even the space between the car wash.
It's not very large, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
One of our local residents got a gold star award for top resort again, Breezy Point.
Oh.
It was in the paper today.
Or today. That's good honor. I mean, it's good, it goes to show that they're running it the right way, which is what we want because they're in our city.
What paper was that?
The Northern Press.
Oh.
Yeah, that's in there today.
We'll move to open forum number two. Since we have no participants, we'll close open forum number two. And is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll second.
Being adjourned.
Very good. Mike, you keep these things short, we like that.
Yeah.
Can you talk about the court enforcement?
I didn't have to say anything.